Call the city council to order and with the roll call, we are joined by council member Martinez, council member Schultz, council or Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin and council member Freezer. Council member Dominguez might be joining us by audio official tonight. So first order of business is their approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a comment on your agenda, you see that we have several months of the third change with. The clerk over and I met with finance committee here a few weeks ago. The reason why you're seeing quite a few of those is that as we've discussed also with council, ongoing trying to work through a software issue with in code that we had discovered in the past fiscal year budget. And so as we continue to look through that, it had to lead our reconcil- our reconciliation ability. For Cooper has worked closely with in code and a lot of things have been discovered as we're working through our integration with the upgrade. And so for that reason, just within the last week, actually last two weeks, third hope for it has worked through January and through May to get the reconciliation. And as the secondary check back, I reviewed those reports and who goes against our finances to find them correct and and cut to me. And so she is the clerk is continuing to work on June and we'll hope to have that on the twentieth. So then we will be in a position to do our year ending. So if you had any further questions on that item, you can reach out to the line sort with those questions.
Thank you. Is there additional questions or comments from the council member? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next up are reports and we'll start off with a report from our city engineer, Ray O'Callaghan.
So I think that last time we told you we had a coordination meeting, we've been working with the West Liberty Foods on the wastewater treatment plants and the financing. We're starting to get that put together into the CIP, which is a kind of a great study. But we're moving along on that. I think probably by another month, we'll have that done. At the power plant, the roof project appears to as my report that I just got two minutes ago. It appears like it's there hasn't been any leaks since they came over and fixed it. So that's all good. Carlisle, who is the supplier of the materials, came over and did a test because you get a, I think it's a fifteen year warranty. Maybe not fifteen, but twenty, twenty years. So that warranty doesn't isn't good unless Carlisle comes over and doesn't. I haven't got that report yet from them. I'll find out quickly what where that report is. I heard everything went well. We had a guy there. So next meeting, we should be able to close that project out. They're still holding twenty percent retained at this point, not really retained, twenty percent because they had those leaks and the five percent retention. All right. Well, to integration, they still have not done that work yet. I'm going to go over to the water plant tomorrow and talk through with Austin, what we had gone through before on what we think it'd be okay that the integration should, how the, how the wells, the three wells should operate together with the two trains at the wastewater water treatment. So we'll go over that tomorrow. Hopefully I did talk directly to Jetco to the boss man, and he said that they, they're going to be over here. He told me this week, but I'm almost certain it's not going to be. It's probably going to be natural. And then that that was the rest of it. The next coordination meeting we have is on the sixteenth of August. That's all I had today.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you do one more?
Sure.
The sidewalk that you're going to talk about today, assuming it gets approved at Columbus Street. We talked to All American about doing the work. They said they probably would be doing that work as soon as school starts. They've got some work they've got to press to get done until school starts. But as soon as school starts, they thought they'd get free to do that. And at the same time, they were going to go over and do the, we had a cracked panel that they agreed to replace at their cost. They're going to replace the cracked panel and then do a repair of the curb at Gibson Street at the same time. So those three things should be done soon as school starts.
Have a question.
Yeah, go.
I'll do whatever. I had a question on, I know this was brought up many months ago or perhaps last year. But I wanted you to keep it on your radar that to revisit with city manager about the speed bumps on Short Street because I had another inquiry on River At with this, the speed bumps and reducing the speed on Short Street.
I, it has been brought up and I don't think we did anything as far as, I, I think I've told you that other cities are doing some sometimes some creative things, then they've done some things. And I think Bed North, where I live right now, they're making these big, long speed bumps, so very long. And I think it's for bike traffic type of thing, right? Anyway, I will, I will show you what I've been seeing lately. Thank you.
Report from the city manager.
Um, so just to verbally give you, um, just wanted to follow up as Leo stated, we've been meeting with West Liberty Foods and talking about our wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Um, there's been a couple of questions that came out of that and um, and Leo has followed up with West Liberty Foods on those items. Um, pertaining to some work that was required by them in D and R. So thank you for following through with that. In addition to that annexation, I continue to work with we lead director Ken Brooks. Um, we are at the point now where I think from the Department of Transportation, um, an understanding that that the right of way, um, that the DOT would be in support of the right of way, um, but they did not give us a clear answer to the actual annexation of the, the land that the highway sits on. So I have some follow up to do with the, the attorney on that. Um, and then we have Mr. Harry's annexation process to get underway at the end of Eighth Street. And so that, those are the two annexation pieces that we, we have to look on. With developments, um, right now BISs, um, as you can see, they, they've continued the work. There's some foundation work going on there. Um, during this, it was, um, because there had been a change in, um, some of the building specs and there has to be a variance. Um, and that request has gone on and the board of adjustments will be meeting on, um, to, to look at that request of the variance. Um, at this time, I don't, I don't see an issue with that going forward. On top of that, um, Cody Franklin, our electric superintendent, um, had met with Mr. Dumont. Um, there is, um, some misunderstanding with the electrical construction. And, um, so Cody and I have been meeting and discussing to see what we can find uh, within the means of the city to, to compromise to, to resolve that. And so I think we were able to come up with something today. Um, we'll just follow up with our legal to see if we can proceed with that. Then in, then in addition to that, um, we have clerk and I met with Marco Technology today. Um, this is who we have set our lease agreement through for the printer, copier, scan machine. Uh, we went with them to establish getting an assessment of our IT system um, in place. Essentially, it's an audit to go over, um, our, our IT network. And this would help identify and be a good tool, resources for our IT and possibly provide us, you know, similar to what we do with facility studies, provide us um, a mapping or an idea of what the city can do efficiently and effectively for our, our IT systems. Again, with the crowd strike, um, we're very fortunate, you know, that our impact ended. Um, however, I know there's other companies that are still kind of looking through those things. Then on top of that, we met with Monday, we met with Nate Summers from U and B for our financial advisor. Um, but clerk and I went through our current debt information. Um, we provided a listing of, um, our projects that we're looking at from other departments. Um, and we suggested that we did a work session put together in October for council so he can, uh, so they can present our, our debt information as we're going into the budget season. I might continue to work on our Iowa grants administration and, uh, female reimbursement is due by August eighteenth. So I'll be finalizing that report to get, um, over so we can, um, hopefully start getting some reimbursement back from our storms. Then at this time, um, and clerk, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, um, nuisances. We have four cases that we've moved forward with legal action on those cases. And, um, again, I won't disclose the address information here. Um, however, if council has any questions on those, please feel free to reach out to me and I'll go over those nuisance items. Last previous weeks have been wrapping up some litigation, um, on some HR management with, uh, which I communicated and all of you are aware of those situations. Working with the water department, um, Adam's done a really great job working with that department as well um, and assisting them and, um, getting things organized, but there has not been any disruption. And likewise, I reached out to Leo fully right away, Chris Freezing, um, just a, a a, a really knowledgeable individual when it comes to the water treatment. Um, and so we agreed just to work on an hourly basis to have those system water flows. So our compliance reports are in order. Everything's moving smoothly. I know the water department and I, they ran into a situation with one of our pumps. Um, it was leaking and it's having issues and had to be removed. So on top of the water main break today, they were also dealing with one well, uh, one, one well going. So, but, um, again, it was to Adam and the, and the water department folks, they, they managed it. So from there, uh, I also wanted to take out time real quickly here and recognize, um, that Corporal Blocker, um, with the police department applied for our opening with our sergeant's position. And, um, and we have chosen to, uh, move, uh, into the sergeant's position. Um, and again, I want to say, um, our, our police department is very, very, um, how do I, I'm trying to find the right words, very much appreciative of, um, Sergeant Blocker's work that he has done, um, over the last months. Ever since, um, you know, Chief Hauser came on board, um, Blocker took initiative to be a good balance within the department. Well, a lot of the main things that were going on, he, he maintained, um, a steadfast, um, you know, work and, um, there were things that he stepped up to, didn't have to be asked to do those things. He brings with, uh, to the city, um, a strong knowledge and experience. Um, and I think he is very well suited for the sergeant's position and mirrors our chief. And chief, I don't know if you had anything in addition you would like to add to that.
Yeah, Sergeant Blocker's been consistent since I got here and a huge resource for me and stuff as well. Some people, yeah, took a step back. He took a step forward.
I do have, um, I know I met with, uh, council member Schultz. And we had a conversation and have a list of items, um, that I had not had an opportunity completely for this evening, but I have those. Some follow up with that, um, as well as, uh, council member McFerrin. We've had a few things, um, as far as the, the popular there at the post office, I'll call them backup with Adam. Um, so there's some things that, um, that took some priority over what we discussed, but I still have them on our list and, and we'll continue to work on those. In addition, uh, this Friday, we, we have the employee committee scheduled to meet with the executive committee of we lead um, to have a discussion regarding, um, the agreements um, that we currently have with the, the we lead organization. Um, and we'll provide some more details on that in the, as we go forward. Um, the West Liberty Business Association meeting is this, uh, Friday as well at noon here at the community center. And I'll, I won't say too much on that, just in case Mr. Brooks has some information on that. And I think for the most part, that covers the, I have my notes on, I'm watching on the other questions.
Any questions from the council members? Okay, the streets, um, police department communications and safety reports are in the packet. Are there any questions or additions to those reports from?
When the police truck now has decals on it, thanks to graphics.
Okay.
Yeah, we started that back today. It's our part map. That's great.
Okay, that's good. I noticed that, um, in our, uh, public works directors report, uh, a couple of employees who've increased their certifications. And please relate to them, congratulations and that, uh, we're very pleased, um, to, uh, for their dedication to the city in that regard. And then, uh, which Sergeant Blocker being appointed to that position, the same thing that, uh, he has reflected, um, the kind of policing, I think that's important in the diverse community that we live in, uh, and it's been an excellent resource that we look forward to continue being an excellent resource. Are there anything else with the report? All right, next up is the vendor claims, vendor claims, uh, list number one. In the amount of a million, uh, seven hundred or seventy thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, um, it's signified by saying those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the, uh, vendor voucher claims are included. Now we're to the point of, uh, public comments and or correspondences, the time that's set aside for the public, um, to talk about topics of city business other than those that are on the agenda. Are there any public comments? We lead director. Brooks.
Thank you, Ken Brooks, we lead one nineteen East Third Street, West Liberty. Um, I thank the city manager for mentioning the upcoming business association meeting is Friday. Uh, the entire public is welcome. The running joke is to be a member of the business association. You don't show up for lunch. Couple of exciting announcements will be coming out of we lead. Uh, they'll be announcing a couple of new programs and community initiatives. Uh, so we'd love to have you there for that. And you will be welcome in our, my guest speaker, Miss Stephanie Dietrich, who is the certified housing counselor for Mesquite County. She will, of course, take any questions that you have about her role as housing counselor, uh, but her program would be talking about first time home buyer education. We lead has been proud to partner in her office to offer first time home buyer classes here in West Liberty and which programs are taught both in English and in Spanish. We will continue to offer those supported. So that is the program and the equation is the same.
And it will be in this building next door. Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Uh, we'll move on to, uh, the, uh, city council member, uh, comments. And I'd like to say that I had an opportunity to visit with one of our developers here in the community this past week. And, uh, unsolicited, uh, got very good, uh, reports about our city manager, our city clerk, about our electrical superintendent and about our public works director. So, uh, thank you all. And it was good to hear those kind of positive comments about, uh, all four of your works. Council member Martinez. Council member Schultz.
I've received nothing. I would just like to remind the community that the business district will be open next Wednesday, February fourteen. Um, so that will keep off them, they're not being used in park later and business will be open and I just encourage everybody to enjoy a little bit of what's left of sun.
Uh, nothing other than what I brought up and like city manager first brought up within the post office, right? Way and the short street.
Council member Freezer, I have not received any use. All right, thank you. Okay, city manager.
Um, we have received, um, the annual invitation to the Iowa legal cities annual conference scheduled for September eighteenth through the twentieth, um, in Sioux City. And so I currently have myself, or I have public works director, um, Adam and the clerk over and myself. Um, I'm going to forward you the flyer information in your email so you can read that a little bit more. So you can have a seat with the flag and then like the schedule is. And along with, um, council member Schultz, I just read, this is one of the items that we talked about and I wanted to give him the opportunity to bring that up. And that, um, I will follow up with our city supervisors and, and staff and encourage them um, to be out and about to support the event we've gotten turned on on this route to the fair.
City clerk, Hope. All right. Next up is new business item number seven, A. A discussion of appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty on the events request application for the West Liberty Chamber of Commerce for music in the park beginning August seventh, two thousand twenty-four. So first up is discussion. Any discussion?
This is going to be those four Wednesdays starting tomorrow. I know this is other sun, but it's, it's the regular music in the park. It's organized by we lack. I believe they start at six forty-five and they go to nine every Wednesday this month. So feel free to come out and hear some good music. And I think all we're really requesting is power. So we need, so.
Is there any, uh, other discussion by the council? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah, if those opposed nay. The ayes have it, uh, it is approved. That's the city's resolution, twenty twenty-four zero eight zero six hyphen one seven zero. A resolution to accept the cost proposal for engineering services to conduct a generation study to upgrade the city's generation capacity. Explore different options for fuel generator types. Upgrade for existing equipment and transmission of high pressure gas for the West Liberty Electric Plant. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Uh, I did have a question on the page two of the BHNG scope document under proposed dates. I assume that those dates are going to change or have they already started?
Uh, they will, they are looking forward a little bit.
Okay.
So we didn't, couldn't get on the, couldn't get on the agenda till today. So, yeah, then they didn't quite know our, our schedule for our council. Those were just kind of tentative dates.
Okay.
But yeah, essentially this is, uh, this is the starting of a, a very long process. Um, we're gonna, the scope of work and what they're going to be looking at is going to be with the whole facility in general, um, and how to derive more revenue through our, through our generation. We're at the point now where, uh, our capacity is, is lacking to what we're, our actual load is. Um, we're starting to grow as a community. Um, so we need to start having these discussions on how we could, uh, we can start growing our capacity as well. If you look at back through, um, on page two here, that, um, the, the scope of the study is going to be very in depth. I mean, we're going to go through different fuels, different, uh, our capacity payments, what we have with our resale power group. There is, uh, different types of generation as in even in, we're going to look at the, the renewables, um, diesel, um, high pressure gas. And ultimately, we're gonna, if everything makes sense, we're going to look at our, our, what kind of return on our investment we can get for those. So, um, like I stated at first, this is the, this is starting the long, long process.
I believe because it's necessary, I just wanted to reiterate that we are basically at capacity. Is that correct?
We are right there.
Ahead if we can't accept anything else unless we move that ceiling.
Not necessarily. I mean, we still have room to grow. But at that point, if we can, we won't have that comfortability. For one, we won't have the comfortability of knowing that we can generate or we can withstand our own, our own, our own load um, separate from, uh, incoming transmission. For two, that if our peak demand goes up above what our capacity is, that we will lose credits that way through our resale power group. So, uh, this is, this is a good time to start this and start this process.
Is there other discussion or question for council members? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Perrin, yes, Freezer.
Yes.
Montana.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Motion versus four zero.
Next up is item seven, C, resolution, twenty twenty-four zero eight zero six hyphen one seven one. A resolution to accept the cost proposal for engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant electrical service update. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll have, um, Mr. Frank, I'll speak a little bit more on this, but, um, this is a project that has been in place. Um, it actually, I think it even may have started discussion prior to, uh, with Cody being employed here his, his first round and then coming back to see that we still have that on our list. But, um, it had been identified in, um, our capital improvement projects a few years ago. And, um, and, and again, the, the project had been reviewed and identified with the last electric revenue bond uh, project. And so, um, so again, thank you. Fully now we're getting it underway, um, been working along with, uh, we strength in with the wastewater treatment plant phases upgrades, and this is one of those projects within those upgrades. Um, and again, if you have any questions, um, Cody, do you have something to add on that?
No, this is just a very long overdue project that, uh, is finally gonna hopefully get deleted this year. I would like to mention that, uh, this project is going to play a role within the gen study possibly as well. We have six hundred and, we have six hundred KW worth of generation power sitting down there that sits idle that, uh, probably won't be utilized after we put in this new service. So we're looking at the possibility of integrating that six hundred KW into what our generation capabilities are now. And possibly get, uh, possibly get capacity payments for those as well. On the environmental land, we got to do a lot of work. They will identify this in both studies. So hopefully I, I've got them shifting their gears towards, towards this at first with the gen study to integrate that into our scope of work with the wastewater treatment plan. So, um, uh, that would be, that engine down there would be a great addition to our, our generation. If we could, if we can integrate it in and get it in parallel with our system.
I, um, I did have a question. It looks according to appendix A on the graphic.
I um I did have a question. Uh, it looks according to appendix A on the graphic. There you have outlined and read various, I believe, changes. Is that for areas that are gonna be affected? Is, is that incorporating new equipment to those areas? Or bringing in um large scale?
So in the process of upgrading their service, um we are also gonna be upgrading the line that goes back into that inch back into the facility.
Okay.
Um, we are gonna be, you start there on the very west side where Aiden Drive starts there. We are gonna be taking that underground all the way back into that facility. And then hopefully sooner um, there's a little box up into the north end on the side of the wastewater treatment plant here. We will hopefully in future go back there and put anodizing underground as well. So it's just a little bit, little bit of future thinking there that we're gonna uh for for another project, we won't get this completed this year, but we will be able to uh put that line all underground.
I didn't know if if we need to gear up to like uh start looking at the creation of any structure or anything like that. If this is something on the back burner that we have to be aware of. Um, or or no, does that not matter?
I will have, I'm not sure what you mean by structure.
Like uh a new housing for all of those areas that you have? I guess. I didn't, I didn't know if there was a need for, since you're upgrading or maybe expanding. I didn't know if there was a need for to house things like in one location or
Oh.
Create create a larger, I guess, footprint there.
Yeah, so some of these are pointing out some of the enclosures that will be housing some of the new equipment.
Okay.
Um, yeah, a lot of these. A lot of these are just pointing out like you see over there by Aiden Street. It's there's a, there's, we're gonna have a junction box there that will house some new equipment for us.
Okay.
Like I kind of uh stated a little bit earlier that we're hoping the sooner than later, we would get have that all that overhead gone and that will all be going underground at some point. So.
Okay. Okay.
Are there additional questions or comments from council members? Hearing them, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
McFerrin, yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Creza.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is item uh seven B, the resolution uh twenty twenty-four zero eight zero six hyphen one seven two. A resolution to approve the payments to JB's um JB's uh at uh one 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 zero North Columbus Street in West Liberty, Iowa. By two, the uh, I think they're for temporary construction and slope easement for the uh Columbus Street sidewalk project. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say and recognize that owners of JB's pub and rub, um they um um we we had some really good discussion. Um, the the city provided an opportunity to the owner uh to have a say, to have a position in this construction. Um, and and it took us a little bit, but we all worked together and um, you know, and and was able to accomplish um their agreement and uh and support of the project. So again, we would just like to thank uh Sarah Messer and and her due diligence and asking questions and and uh and and working with them in order to come to a a a compromise uh to to have this uh project continue. Um, so with that said, administration supports the
Are there other questions or comments from council members? Hearing them, the clerk will call the roll.
Creza.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
McFerrin, yes. Motion passes four zero.
Item seven E, um a time to set um a date for uh walk through the water treatment plant. Um, work session on August twentieth uh at six P M. Comments? With the consensus that we set it at six P M on August twentieth. Silence of Golden, it will be at uh six P M on August twentieth. Next up is item um seven F, uh to set a public hearing on the garbage ordinance update. Uh multi dwelling units on August twentieth at seven thirty P M. Any questions, comments? Hesitations, etc. All right, that's established as well. Next up is item um seven G, um a public hearing on mowing ordinance update. Also at seven thirty on August twentieth. Any objections, concerns? All right, that public hearing is set as well. They've set a date for a public hearing on open gun dumping ordinance, August twentieth at seven thirty P M. Any objections, comments? It's gonna be a busy night, I think, uh 'cause the council member has stated that correctly. All right, that is our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work.